2020 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. On the agenda this evening, we have the Pledge of Allegiance, Public Service Announcements, Moment of Silence, Presentation of the Board on the Proposed Development of an Equine Center, Partner Reports from Town Administrators, Buildings Department, Recreation Department, Department of Public Works, Water and Sewer. We have a Review and Possible Action on a Change Order for Pump Station. Water Pump Station, Consideration and Possible Action on the FY21 Million Paving Bid, Consideration and Possible Action on the Summer 2020 Paving Program, Consideration and Possible Action on Revision to Sturbridge Police Departments' Use Force Policy, Concur with the Appointment of V.I. to the Sturbridge Cultural Council, Concur with the Appointment of Dr. Alicia Redden to the Cultural Council, Concur with the Reappointment of Rich Paradise as a Full Member to the Trails Committee, Consideration and Possible Action on the Replacement of the Rooftop Air Handling Unit at the Public Safety Complex, Consideration and Possible Action on the Bay Door Replacement at the Public Safety Complex, Consideration and Possible Action of Transferring Truck 27 from the County Public Works, Sturgis Elementary School, Consideration and Possible Action on a Contract for Heating Oil for FY21, Consideration and Possible Action on a Contract for Unleaded Gas, Diesel Fuel, and Propane for FY21, Consideration and Possible Action on an Agreement between the Sages of the Sturbridge Police Department and Sturbridge Police Association and the Town of Sturbridge for the Temporary Increase in Compensation during the Term of the Internate Chief of Police, Consideration and Possible Action on Accepting the Resolution of Yenvi Menden as Administrative Assistant to the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator, Consideration and Possible Action on an Agreement for Engineering Services, the Design of the Municipal Park and Lot for 501 Main Street, Old Business, New Business, and Responder, Minutes, Citizens, Public, and then the other items. And then I do have to read the Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 Orders for Pending Certain Provisions of the Meeting Law, General Law Chapter 30, 6, and 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 Orders imposing strict limitations of the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen will be conducted by a remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen and or watch the meeting either online via the town's on-demand video broadcast on cable television on Channel 191, or dial into the meeting at 774-304-1455, enter 1428-TOWN for the meeting number, and 12345 for the access code. This phone number is only active for the public during public meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best effort, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay, could we please stand to the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with platitude and justice for all. Okay, first on the agenda, we have Public Service Announcement. Mary, do you have any?
Uh, no, I, well, I guess I just want to hope that everybody had a happy and peaceful Fourth of July celebration. Um, I'm sorry that I was unable to make the town meeting, um, last week, uh, but, um, it was for a good reason, and I'm glad everything went smoothly.
Mike, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Okay, and I don't have anything. Okay, next we will have a Moment of Silence for all those who have died and have been affected by COVID-19. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Presentation on a Proposed Development of an Equine Center in the Town of Sturbridge. Jeff?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board of Selectmen members. Bob George is here this evening with a group of people who want to speak to or present to the Board of Selectmen their proposal or their idea to develop a racetrack equestrian center in the Town of Sturbridge. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. George to walk us through this and make the presentation.
Thank you, Jeff. So, we're here tonight with Armin Kanjigian. He is a developer and the one who is really behind this project. We also have caller 11, I believe that's Tim Burke, Timothy Burke. He's the engineer for the project. I think he's trying to get some videos, so we can show some rendering. I'll work on that. But for now, I think what I'd like to do is get him over to Armin and just have him tell you a little bit about his vision and what he wants to do.
Okay.
Okay, good evening.
Hi, can you, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, well, I've been involved with horses most of my life, and I've been involved with racing for approximately 40 years. I was on the Board of Directors of the Masturbate Breeders for about 30 years. And about a year ago, when it was evident that racing was going to stop in Massachusetts, I thought I would try to see if I could put something together and do something a little different. Most of the people that were interested in building or had talked about building a racetrack, their, their main interest was casinos and slot parlors, et cetera. And my interest was basically in the horse-related activities, which racing is definitely part of it. So, I started the process about a year ago, and we started looking at a number of locations. And it's, it's not easy to find a good location that fits the criteria that I was looking for. First of all, you need enough land. And then to build a legitimate racetrack, which would encourage horses at, at good levels to come here, you need to build a mile dirt or a synthetic track and a seven, eight-to-the-mile turf track. And that you could do on probably 25 or 30 acres that was laid out perfectly, but when you look around, that's really not that available. So, we, that was only one of the considerations. Then you have to look at the access so that people intend to come there and watch whatever the venues are, can easily get to the location. And then you also have to think of how disruptive that would be to the town. And we put all these things together, and it becomes more of a problem. So, we did find this location in Sturbridge, and I happen to be, have some friends that live there, have been living there for many, many years. They're horse people, and both of them asked, you know, if the town would be receptive, and they said possibly. I asked around for an offer to represent me locally, and people recommended Bob and his sister Karen. And when I first went to them, they were rather hesitant and wanted to research this further before they took me on as a client. They wanted to make sure that this was something that would not be detrimental to the town. And I perfectly understand that. Any, anything, especially something of, on a large scale as this, is the townspeople certainly going to be concerned about how it affects the character of the town. And I certainly do not want to disrupt Sturbridge's. I haven't been there a lot, but it, it's a beautiful town, and it has a lot of character, and, and everybody should consider, is this something that would really disrupt the town? And what I think doesn't matter is the town officials and the townspeople that are going to make that decision. I personally don't think it, if this is done correctly, I think it can be something that could add to the, to what the town has to offer. So, we found the site, and again, one of the things that we were looking for was accessibility. And also, since you're going to be running events where you hope to draw, you know, a couple of thousand people, you have to consider what is the traffic pattern going to be and how disruptive that would be. And what we did, the, the access to the site that we're, we've secured is actually you would get off the entry exit in Connecticut, and then you would come to, I believe it's Mashapaw Road in Connecticut, and then it's to Breakneck Road, which goes through, I believe, a small area of town property, and then it becomes a paper, what the term, I guess, is a paper road. To me, it's like a, like a fire road, dirt road that goes all the way through and eventually gets to the town landfill. So, the thought I had was, well, once, when you're on that Mashapaw Road, go by maybe, I don't know exactly, I would say six or eight houses. So, in our research, we found some additional land that was available that would, we could put a, a road directly off Mashapaw before you even got to the houses and eliminate any traffic in that way, send access to site that we've secured. So, the objective would be to build a racetrack and a horse park that could accommodate all different types of horse activities, different types of shows with all different breeds of horses. And the other important part of this would be to build a retirement home for thoroughbreds. That's something that's very important to me and my wife, and I think it would be not only a nice project, but many of these horses, when they're not used for racing, are still very suitable for other regiments. And then this would be an ideal project where we could rebrain these and find good homes for them. Most thoroughbred owners, like myself, when a horse isn't able to compete for whatever reason at the level that you want, they usually just look to find a good home for that horse, and, which is critical. So, having a retirement home where they could go there and, first of all, if they're over or not able to reach in some other regiment, then they would retire. And as far as the racetrack portion of it, my idea would be to build something on the idea of a mini Saratoga, not a conventional racetrack. Many of these racetracks run for, you know, as much as they can. They run for eight, 10 months out of the year. That, to me, first of all, I don't think that's even doable anymore, you know, the way things are. So, I think after, in the first year or two, I would believe that you would be racing realistically, probably eight to 10 days, maybe a little bit more than that in the course of a year, until you were able to build it and hopefully get to the point where possibly you could run a month of six weeks in the spring and a month of six weeks in the fall. Much more than that, I don't think you would be able to get the horse population, and I don't think would realistically. So, in the grand scheme of things, the racing is definitely the important ingredient in this, but the amount of actual days that would be involved in racing is relatively minor. So, the showgrounds hopefully would take up and some of the slack where we could be doing horse activities throughout the summer months. So, as far as, naturally, our winters are pretty tough up here, so I don't see a lot of horse activity throughout the winter months. I have discussed this with the two major horse-related or thoroughbred-related entities. One is the HBDA, which is a national organization that most tracks affiliate with, and the New England chapter has voted to support my project, and the Mast Breeders have done the same. So, the horse people are behind it. I did have a meeting, a virtual meeting with the Gaming Commission, and they seem to be very much in favor of something like this, especially since what I'm proposing does not require legislative change. It basically would need the town's approval, and, and I understand it would have to go to a town meeting, et cetera. But I also understand that if the town officials are not receptive to this, that, you know, I certainly am not going to try and force something down anybody's throat. So, if, if hopefully the town officials first think that this is something that might be good for the town, there certainly are a lot of financial incentives. We're prepared to do things for the town. The town will generate money as a result of the various activities, some of it through the gaming law, and some of it through the various taxes that would be generated. There'd be a lot of jobs generated, which naturally, you know, the people of Sturbridge would give preference. My hope would be that if this appears to be something that the town would like, I would love to meet with some of the town, you know, agencies. I've worked with the Boys and Girl Scouts. I happen to be the principal owner and CEO of a couple of large health and fitness complexes. I have one in Mass, and I have one in Medfield. One in Kingston I had for over 30 years. And for almost that amount of time, I've worked with Boys and Girl Scouts. I love them, special privileges in my club. I work with the Council on Aging and many town agencies. And this is a point, a number of years ago, I live, and I have a horse farm in the town of Medfield, and many of the people in Medfield approached me about building a club like I have in, in Medfield. And what they did, the town had purchased a large parcel of land from a developer to keep it as open space, but they wanted a facility like mine, so they encouraged me to, to pursue this, and they went to town meeting. I've never heard of anything where they took land that was purchased to be used for open space. They voted for a lot of me to build a for-profit health and fitness fund. And I've worked with all, I've worked with the various agencies in the town, and if the town feels that this is something, I would love to meet with the various agencies and, and people in the town to see if there are things that we could do that might be good for the town. The Boys and Girl Scouts, I, I haven't done that yet because I didn't want to look like I was circumventing town officials. So, I'm ready to answer any questions that you might have.
Karen?
Yes, hi, Karen Davis. I just wanted to just say a couple of things. You know, first of all, Armin did come to us over a year ago, and we spent a lot of time trying to determine if this was a good fit for Sturbridge. Um, you know, first of all, Armin is a very community-oriented conscientious person. We've dealt with a lot of people, and we've really enjoyed working with Armin. He has been shy in saying how much he contributes to a community. It's very important to him that he becomes a part of this, pays attention to what it is that, the area that he's going to be a part of needs, and then he wants to address that. Um, you know, this, this horse park that he's talking about, racing is just a very small piece of that. It's needed in order to fund things, but his vision is beyond that. It's, it's a big part of the retirement community for the horses when they no longer can race. He talked about having different shows that would be available. And as we sat with him, he presented this horse park as sort of a place where the town would be able to have events, the racing would just be one piece of it. So, it would offer a venue for activities there as well. So, I think it's important that we address the racetrack, but I don't want to lose sight of the larger vision here, and I don't want to lose sight of how important it is when we pick somebody to work with in the town, that that person is somebody who we're going to be able to have a meeting of the minds with, who's willing to make compromises, and who's going to actually listen to what it is that is important to Sturbridge. For example, the, the access, that was a very big problem when we first talked about this. We're like, you cannot have traffic going up and down Breakneck Road. We need to find a solution to this problem. And Armin went out, and he found another piece of land so that there would not be traffic. So, these are very important things. His goal today is to introduce this, but to also, I want you to get to know him a little bit so that you can have an idea of who you might be working with going forward. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Okay, Board, if you have questions or comments?
I don't have questions, but I, I want to tell you that I picked my packet up Friday morning, and I was glowing with excitement all weekend about this project, and I want to thank you for your interest in Sturbridge. I, I fully support this, I'm fully behind it, and I think everything about it is great. So, I want to thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I think, I think if I get the opportunity, I will show you, I will do what I say, and I would love to work with it. It's a beautiful town, and I'd love to work with you there, really. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah. Sorry, I just want to check this thing. Tim Burke, are you on the line, Tim?
Yes, I am. I'm struggling to get on the computer version of it, so, can you hear me?
I can. Just so you know, Tim Burke is the engineer, and he could answer site questions for you. There are some renderings that we can try to put up to show you. I have them on my computer, I emailed them over to Jeff. But anyways, he's available if you have questions about the site or about the engineering.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, I was very interested also in the, the study that was done by, the study that was done by UMass, and it's really exciting. I mean, the potential economic impact is, would be rather sizable. I do know that there's other proposals in the state. For example, Great Barrington wants to do something like that with the Great Barrington And so, I have, I have a question about if the market for this type of facility is diluted by several facilities across the state. Will it really be feasible?
Well, that's a very good question. The, when I met with the Gaming Commission, it, they stated to me they intended to license one racetrack in the state. There are meetings that I've been, that I've had and are ongoing in reference to some of these other locations. There was a couple of them that have been in the newspapers and all that have basically dropped out. They're no longer, for whatever reason. The issue of Great Barrington, I don't think is going to be an issue. I think we will, we will be the only racetrack in Massachusetts.
Okay, Mike?
I can't, let me say this to you. I know you're probably wondering why I would say that, but some of the conversations and meetings I've had would indicate that if I will get approval from Sturbridge, that everything else be all by wayside as far as racing. Anything that might happen in Great Barrington may only be a stopgap measure until I'm ready to follow.
Yeah. Hold on. Tim? Tim, that's you. Can you turn the, turn the volume down on your computer, please?
Okay.
There you go.
Armin, the, the other point I'd like to make is, over the years, I'm going back, you know, 30, 40, 50-plus years, Sturbridge has seen several proposals for different types of racing.
Different types of racing?
And I'm just, they, many of them have not fared well at town meeting or, you know, going to the voters. And so, I'm just saying that, you know, times have probably changed, but you will have to do some public relations if you want, if the, you know, in order for the public to be supportive of this type of proposal.
Well, I agree with, I agree with that as well. You know, change is not anything, especially of something of this size, people, you're going to get people questioning it. It's not easy to get through a town meeting where you're going to need 2/3 of the vote, and I know that. I certainly of the vote. Uh, and I know that, uh, I certainly would try my best to, uh, you know, meet with town people, uh, maybe some of the, the various, you know, uh, committees and whatever, to see if there's some way that we could all work where this becomes something that's really good for the town. Uh, I, I would do that. Uh, the thing is, it ultimately is going to go to voters. And in, and in my, my experience is that if the town officials don't think it's a good idea, then you have very little chance of convincing the people in the town that this is something that they should consider. So, uh, but it's not an easy, I think if I were to get approval from town officials, and then hopefully we could convince the townspeople that this is a good project, I really believe that the, the gaming commission in the state would endorse this very, very strongly. Uh, that's what I feel. Unless you get through the, you know, the process of what we're doing here, uh, and I, and let me say this, I've, I've invested a considerable amount of money, uh, to this point, but I am fully aware that, uh, unless the town holds this, this is dead in the water. I mean, so, it's part of the game. I, I really would love to do this. Uh, I hope that I can do it. But again, it, it will be out of my, you know.
Karen?
Yeah, Mike, just to, obviously that's something that we've been aware of from the beginning. Um, a couple of things. You know, we have hired a marketing firm because we feel as though education is going to be very important because this is going to offer a lot for community events, things we really haven't had. You know, the other thing, you know, when Armin came to us and he said, you know, what sort of needs do you, your town have? And we talked about, we've been trying to get a ball field in town for I don't even know how many years. And, you know, Armin's willing to contribute substantial money to building that for the community. So I go back to what I originally said. He's very conscientious about where he's going to be and who he's going to be interacting with. And it's important for him to address the needs of the community. Um, so we understand this is a little bit of an uphill battle. I know how many things have tried to go into that property over the years. But I think we're going to be offering something more than a box store, you know, or a mini golf course. This is going to be a community center, you know. And he has talked about offering four age activities there, uh, the, the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts, um, the ball field. So these are all things that even if you're not a horse person, you're going to be able to have access to that.
Hey, you want to answer, Mike?
I, I just had one last question. Uh, there, there's a lot of, uh, there's several residents of Sturbridge that I know that are very active in the sport of polo. Is there any, I didn't see any plans for, uh, accommodating polo, uh, in the fields that, that would be available at the site. Uh, was there any consideration for that or not?
Say that again. I didn't hear. What was that activity?
Polo.
Oh, polo. Um, well, I mean, I, I, if we could do that, I, I would love to. I, I mean, I think, I, see, part of the problem is, there are wetlands on this site. And in, uh, it's about two hundred and twenty-four acres. Now, we've tried, we've, we've secured some other land, but that's in Connecticut. And I'm working on some other land in, uh, adjacent to my, this property. Now, if, if this was something that the people, or there was a group that was interested in doing, I certainly would, any type of, not just horse activity, or any activity, if we could do it, uh, and it's not disruptive to what I'm trying to do, I, I could almost guarantee you, like, something like that, we could do it.
Okay. That's all my questions.
I would agree. We, we have the room. Yes.
Hey, go ahead.
I'm, I'm finally on board. And it'd be happy to run through the drawings if you would like to see them. If I can give a screen share, I can put those up for you.
Can I, can I, can we have, uh, some questions from the board first and then?
Oh, certainly. Yeah.
Mary?
Yeah, thanks, thank you. Um, Armin, thank you for your interest in Sturbridge. It's Mary. You just seem very willing to work with the town. You keep saying community oriented. Um, I like that you're concerned as to whether or not it was disruptive to the town. You know, we have to weigh to what, will it adversely impact quality of life or enhance quality of life? Um, I know that George has said he's spent almost a year deciding whether you could be a client or whatever. So I mean, I, I would personally, before I could get that full hearted endorsement, I would want to kind of reflect myself on it and do a research too. I'm not that familiar with, um, races or their impact on towns when they move in. Uh, I know you mentioned that you, um, own a number of fitness centers. Um, and I'm just, okay. Um, do you have another, um, race pack or e-point center in New England? Or is this going to be your first, um, show with this type of industry?
This, um, this would be my first in doing this.
All right.
I've, I've done, I've, I've done all types of projects in many towns in Massachusetts. I've done projects in other states, uh, in other countries. I, I, in fact, I, I did a project, uh, I purchased some real estate in Culpeper, Culpeper, Virginia, in a historic district downtown. And just to give you an, uh, an idea of, you've got to, you know, think about it. Here is somebody from the north coming into the heart of the south in a historic district. And I bought two buildings. And I wanted to put, renovate the buildings and, and put some restaurants, et cetera. And I, the town, I worked, met with all the town officials. I flew there many, many times. And they finally got on board, which is really unusual because I always called myself a carpetbagger. And they used to laugh, but, uh, I, I did work with them. And that was a difficult, difficult project, to be honest.
Okay, okay. So, uh, so you, I get it. Um, and you described it as possibly being a mini Saratoga on a smaller scale?
Yes.
Um, are there other racetracks, um, that you could compare yourself to? So if I wanted to look into those and, and see what kind of effect they've had on the town, are there other within the size that you're contemplating that I might review?
Yeah. Well, let me say this. First of all, this, the, the conventional racetrack is normally, the physical plan are much larger than what I would anticipate that we would be involved in. Most of these racetracks are designed to run for many, many months out of the year. There's no way that that could happen here in, in Massachusetts. Uh, I've been involved in horse racing for many, many years. The only, and I've been to tracks across the country. Uh, and many of them are nice, many of them are. Uh, the place that I would love to, uh, be a mirror image of would be Keeneland in Lexington. Now, people know of Churchill Downs. That's where Kentucky Derby is. But Keeneland is the most beautiful facility. Uh, and they only run something like a month or six weeks in the spring and something similar to that in the fall. They have some of the biggest horse sales in the world. Um, people fly from all over the world to go to the sales that take place at Keeneland. But if you go there during the month or so that they're racing, you wouldn't believe, you wouldn't think you were at a racetrack. If the people come out, the young people, the families, I was totally blown away. Uh, uh, it was, it was such a festive event. Uh, I, I just, and I love gold. I love it. Uh, and if I could replicate something like that, it would be beautiful. But that's probably the closest of, uh, of anything. Because most of the racetracks across the country are very large. Uh, they run for, you know, mostly, almost year round, not year round, but pretty close.
Okay, thank you. I'll look into that. And I just had a couple more questions. I know this is only an introductory meeting. So, um, so you're contemplating a maximum of six weeks in the spring and six weeks in the fall for a total of three months of the year dedicated to racing?
I, I don't see how even in the best of circumstances that you would be able to run. And maybe I wouldn't even want to run much more than that.
Um, okay. So, couple more questions. Um, so I know what you mentioned is two hundred and twenty-three acres a site. Yeah. Um, on a race day, um, how big is that arena? What is the maximum amount of people, of spectators that would fill what you're envisioning? If it were to be full? I know it may not be full, but I just, I'm still trying to get a sense of the size of this project. So what would, and it's probably helpful that the engineer does put up the, um, plan. But what would you consider a full stadium of people?
Okay. Um, the, the building itself would not accommodate, well, we wouldn't be building a building to accommodate thousands of people. That, that's not what I want to do. Uh, we build a building and then have tents and areas that people could, uh, sit, uh, benches. The amount of people, uh, to be honest with you, I would say maybe on a, on a perfect day, maybe a few thousand people.
Two thousand people?
Well, it could be more, could be free. I, I, you know, I, I don't know.
So what it, how much would it accommodate on this particular site? How many people could you conceivably have?
Well, that's a large, that's a large site. You, you could, like I said, uh, these people normally, uh, the way we're going to feature this is more of a festival type of activity. So it's not like they would all be indoors. Like some of these tracks that you see are huge. There's some of the grandstands and the facilities that's built, looking to build. So a lot of it would be, there will be a permanent building, but that building, you know, off the top of my head, I don't know, maybe Tim could give me a, a better idea or, but maybe, how many people could we hold in the building that we're going?
Certainly the building, Armin, just on the ground itself. I'm trying to get a sense of the amount.
We probably could, you probably could fit ten thousand. Uh, but I, I, I don't see where you would get that thousand.
But you could conceivably fit it on the land, you're saying, possibly?
Twenty-four, eh? Yep. I mean, could you, I mean, the land can accommodate a large amount of people, I'm sure.
All right. Karen?
I, I hope, I'm sorry, I, I, I hope I answered your question.
No, you did. I mean, I think maybe what size is, and it might be helpful if the engineer puts up the plan. I'm just trying to, to envision, you know, in terms of the neighborhood, how many people could come on a beautiful spring to participate in the racetrack? And I, and I didn't know if it was a thousand, two thousand, that, you know, the land could accommodate ten. And I don't know, in your financial plan, you must have a sense of how many you want to commit to make it financially, you know, lucrative for you. Um, but that's something to think about. Maybe the next time you come to Florida, you might have a better sense of that.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I don't have a lot of, nothing.
Yeah, I just, I think, uh, Mary's just trying to envision it. So, you know, the racing that Armin's talking about is kind of a festival activity. Um, there's not going to be a big grandstand or a big building. It's going to be more like tents are up, vendors, people are going to come to spend the day. Um, and as far as, you know, there's, people aren't going to be coming to bet. It's not that kind of racetrack that, it will be simulcast betting. So it's really, his goal is to make this sort of a family day. So even though the land might be able to accommodate that many people, it's not going to clear enough land for ten thousand people. And I think realistically, the two thousand to three thousand would be a, a number that, um, you know, we would be thinking.
Oh, okay, thank you. That was helpful. Hey, you all set, Mary?
Yeah, I just had, um, and Armin, you don't have to answer this today, but you do seem very, you know, willing to work with the town. And since I get the sense that this is something that you've wanted to do for a while, to, you know, maybe one of your dreams or whatever. Um, do you envision yourself, and you may not be able to answer this, but I'm, I'm always kind of thinking ahead. Um, you seem community oriented, but at the same time, we have to be on the, we have to want the industry that's coming in, the racetrack, because you could possibly decide to sell and be here. And we may not have the kind of relationship with the next owner. So I think it's important that we don't just identify with the owner of this, but that we embrace this particular type of industry in Sturbridge. Because there's no guarantee that Armin is going to want to, you know, continue. And, um, he can sell it, you know, um, in, I'm not saying you got to do this, but he could conceivably sell it right after it's built and off the ground and ready to go. I think it's important to also kind of embrace the industry, um, as well as our working relationships with, um, with the fleet that's there.
Uh, you know, that, you know, I, uh, everything you're saying makes sense. Uh, just so you know, I'm involving my family. My brother, my son, my grandson are all going to be involved. And, uh, I, I, I would hope that, I'm eighty-five years old. So, uh, you know, I know, you know, I don't have, uh, twenty years.
Don't say that. You don't know that.
But I will say this to you. I, I'm not doing this to, uh, as some financial venture. I have plenty of the financial things that I'm involved in. Not doing it for that reason. And I, I, I would hope that, I'm certainly not going to sell. Uh, and I would hope that my family, uh, get an interest in this. Uh, we're probably going to be dealing with other investors and, uh, so forth in, in, in this project. But as far as, uh, my family, I believe is going to be involved, uh, on.
Okay, thank you. I'm all set, Mary. Okay, thank you. Armin, this is Mary Blanchard. Um, I also appreciate your interest in the town. And I like the idea that this would be a venue other than just the racing. But I do foresee lots of problems with the traffic. I know you have a plan for people getting off eighty-four and everything, but people coming from the east and everything, aren't going to bother getting on eighty-four. They're going to go down one thirty-one and down to River Road and down that way. So I do think there's going to be an awful lot of work that needs to be done with traffic. Also, Jean Gubana, town planner is here. Jean, this is suburban residential, right?
She may have had to jump off, Mary. Jean, are you there?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, yes. Yes, the property is zoned rural residential. So it would definitely take, um, some kind of a zoning change, um, speaking, uh, having some initial conversations with, um, Mr. George and Jonathan Iceman and Jeff. Like an agricultural overlay zone that would allow for the racetrack and the other activities that are proposed. So it would take town meeting vote. It would take some work to do on the zoning. And, and you're right, there, you know, it, it has very interesting possibilities. And then we have to be cognizant of the potential site issues or, you know, in impacts on the community as we go along and if the board is interested in looking at this.
No, I mean, it's a, it's a good idea, but it's going to be, um, a long, tedious, involved process. Tim, maybe you could, um, explain the plan to have us, please?
Yes, uh, thank you very much for this opportunity to show you our, uh, initial drawings. The, um, what's on your screen now is a Google Earth view of the site. Um, here is Route, uh, 84 here, and this is the, where the road stop is that everyone's quite familiar with. And then there's, uh, town recycling centers here. The, um, this is, um, Mashapot Road that turns into Brickneck Road, runs up through here. But this would be, um, the area where we would access from the Union exit on 84. We'd come in this part of the site. And, um, as you can see, it's mostly a wooded, and a lot of wooded marshes. Um, I, this is a, uh, drawing that shows where the wooded marshes are located in this light green area here. And then, um, I have some topography. The topography generally slopes up to the north. This is sort of the higher area here, and then slopes down this way. And, um, and then this is where we would bring in the road, right where I have my cursor here. This is an initial drawing that shows how the track would fit on the land. Again, here's the entrance from the, uh, state line here. And the roadway would come up along here. And this is where we would have our grandstand building and the parking here for about 300 cars. So to answer an earlier question, the grandstand could probably accommodate about 400 people, maybe a little more than that. But on, uh, special days, we would have a, a permeable area here that would be essentially a gravel parking lot along the interstate. And that could, um, hold about 16, or hard to read this here, but about 1,600 cars could fit in here. So, you know, perhaps 3,000 people be, um, I think a tough end of, uh, for the, a big day at the races. Um, over here on this side, there would be an entrance from Brickneck Road as well. This is where the stables would be located and some pasture land. And, um, there's a lot of space here. This is a potential area where some Apollo ground could be arranged as well. Um, in this drawing, you see the white, this light color is the wooded marsh. The, uh, the sort of, uh, tan color is the 50-foot buffer zone, and then the gray is the 100-foot buffer zone. So any work that happens in those areas is, uh, carefully controlled by the Conservation Commission. On the left here is a plan that shows the, uh, initial idea for the grandstand. It has a, uh, a kitchen area, a service area, elevator stair and bathroom here. And then this is the main viewing point here, right at the finish line. And here's where the winner's circle would be located, where the winner gets to have their picture taken after the race. This sort of gives you an idea of some initial thoughts. It would be a, a stone, somewhat vernacular kind of building to fit into the neighborhood and be, look like something that's been there a long time would be our goal. This is another, uh, rendering that shows the finish line and the horse track, as well as the grandstand and the, uh, and the clubhouse. And then one last drawing shows you kind of a view of the grandstand from the track. Um, so we'd be looking at a three-story building, so these, uh, upper deck would have great views of the racetrack. And, um, you know, we're, again, we feel it's a small building, but it fits the site very well. I'm happy to answer any questions, if there's any trouble.
I just want to clarify, I just, just because he was coming in and out a little bit for me. So there's a parking garage, um, to accommodate the grandstand that's the, that, um, can accommodate 400 cars, and then you've got a gravel, um, along Route 84 for 1,600 cars? So a total of 2,000 cars, is that right?
Uh, 300 cars are in this, uh, this would be a paved parking area. It's not a, really a garage, it's still open to the sky.
Oh, okay, I think 100 people, 100 cars, so 300 cars and 1,600 cars?
Along here, that's our initial layout, yep.
Okay. Hey, any other questions from the board for Tim? Hey, anyone else? Jean, do you have any question?
No, I have no questions at this time. I'd be happy to work the, um, with, uh, Mr. Jiggin and Attorney George if there's something the board feels they would like to move forward with.
I've got another, I've got another question about. Um, I do, well, I'll just say where I'm coming from. I'm, I'm not committed tonight to, um, endorse the project one way or another. I think this is an introduction. I, I was given a racetrack that he kind of would love to mirror, Keenwood and Lexington. And I, I want to look into that a little bit more. Whether he chooses, Armin, whether you choose to move forward is kind of your own business decision. Uh, I can't give you the endorsement that Chase has already given tonight. Um, I, uh, reflect a little bit more about how it will impact Sturbridge. Um, I'm intrigued. I know you said that most racetracks in the U.S. run constantly, like that's their main, um, activity. And in your outline sent you, you're contemplating a lot of other activities as well, which is great. Um, and I know you said realistically, it would be a maximum of six weeks in the spring and six weeks in the fall of race to get, um, financially feasible. I don't want to put words in about that, just what my notes were reflecting. And I just wonder, um, is that something that you would contractually commit to in terms of the amount of time that it would actually be devoted to a racetrack? Or is that something that, um, as, as a business model, you need to leave open? Um, in terms of your level of commitment? Because I think, you know, I do think there's going to be certain members of the community that feel exactly like Chase did tonight. There's going to be some members that are going to say, you know, absolutely no zoning change, period. And then there's going to be a lot of people, um, I'm guessing in the middle that are trying to weigh the pros and cons of this type of industry coming to Sturbridge. And some of them are going to be attracted by the thought of having other events other than, uh, racetrack. So I don't know, um, how committed you are to limiting the amount of activities devoted to race days, or if you need to leave that open-ended, or if you're willing to legally contract to not exceed a certain amount of racing days. And you may not answer, I'm not trying to make you answer that tonight. It's just something that I think that you could give some thought.
Uh, let me say this, um, I would be willing to do that. I would like to, uh, cover myself a little bit. If I were to contract, say, this is, I would guarantee or sign a document saying that this is how I would race, uh, I would want to leave a little bit of leeway beyond what I've said. Maybe not much, but I would be willing to sign something like that. Or, or say that the town is only going to approve X amount. But I need, I need some leeway. I don't want, I don't want to go into this with my hands tied too much.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's Chase's line. Um, Armin, Mary, this is, um, Mary, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, Mary, can you?
I can hear you.
Okay, those are things kind of down the road. I think all that you're looking for tonight is possibly a word of encouragement to move forward. We wouldn't be putting a stamp of approval on it because there's no definitive plan yet. But I think they would like to know if you would be willing to support them moving on and you go in step by step, because there are so many steps involved. So is that what you're looking for, Armin?
That would be great, I would love, uh, and then as we go forward, you know, I'd be willing to meet with whoever, you know, you people would like me to meet with and see, uh, there are some things, you know, some people may have some other ideas or, like you brought up Apollo. I think that's something we could accommodate very easily. There may be some other, uh, boards or what other committees, uh, that have questions or would like to see if we could do certain things. I really would like to do that. So, uh, if you could, if, you just described it beautifully. Uh, if I could, if you people feel that this has some, you know, benefits to the town, I'd love to get some type of feeling, you know, uh, from you.
It's just, it would just be, you know, um, actual motion if they had them proceed with it. It's, you know, we're not really approving anything, we're just begging them permission to proceed. And Mary and everyone else knows there's so many steps and so many people to talk to before anything comes to fruition. Okay, so are there anybody that is willing to make the motion to encourage families to move forward in the process?
Yeah, Chase, I'm willing to make a motion to have them move forward in the process and, uh, you know, our support step by step.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that. Mike.
Okay. Mike, Chase, how do you vote?
Wait, is there ready to talk? Sorry, discussion.
Sorry. Um, I, I didn't think that it was going to come to a motion this evening. So I feel a lot like this is similar to that letter of, letter of no opposition when it came to, um, the different, um, marijuana facilities. And I think once we make a motion and it moves forward, it's giving the message that we support it. And I, I just, I, I'm sorry, Armin, at this point in time, after this recent introduction, when I haven't had a real chance to look into this, I am not willing, um, to encourage the project to move forward or discourage it. I think that if you want to move forward, you will need to not only convince residents, um, but also officials, and, and I would be one of them. I'm, I'm not dead set against it, but I'm not, I'm not in a position tonight to say yes, I encourage you to move forward and seek your approval. I don't think that would be fair to you when I'm not on that page at this point. I don't have that warm endorsement that Ace is giving to you at this point. So I'm, I'm not going to vote favor. I, I wish it would have been a motion this evening, but since it has, I, I'm not going to vote favor.
Okay, Chase, could you be, iterate your vote, please?
Yes.
Okay, Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes, Mary. Mary, do you vote?
I'm going to abstain on my commitment to the project at this point.
Okay, so that's 3, 1, 0.
No, it's 3, 0, 1, which is.
Oh, yeah, I said that wrong. Thank you, Mary, 3, 0, 1. Um, yeah, thank you for coming in, and I know you've got a lot of boards to meet with. And Jean, you're going to be busy, all right?
Yes, I, I will be.
Okay, but thank you all for coming in. Bob and Karen, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keenwood is amazing.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have, um, we have a board.
Town Administrator?
Yes, in the interest of time, uh, most of my report of what I've worked on in the last couple weeks is contained within this agenda this evening. A couple other things, though, uh, they did plant an Arbor Day tree today. Um, we kept it low-key due to the COVID item, but it's over at OSV. Uh, that'll allow us to keep our Tree City USA designation. Um, the Health Department reported this morning that the first triple E mosquito was found in Massachusetts, in Orange, Massachusetts. So, um, when it rains, it pours. So we'll have to keep an eye on that as well. And I'm sure Shane and Butch can talk about this when they get, uh, get the mic. But well, three is back up, um, so the water system is back up to where it should be. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Just the tree planted, is it near the one that planted last year?
Um, I don't know, I can get an exact location if you'd like.
Oh, no, I was, I was just curious.
Okay.
Okay, next we have the Building Department, Elson.
Yeah, I'm here. You ready? We're ready for it. You hear me? Okay, hey, uh, it's been a while, um, with that coronavirus, um, since I've been to the last meeting, you know? I figured what I'd do is, uh, I'm going to group them together somewhat, you know, but I'm going to give you the highlights of, of things that are happening. You know, keep, you know, you and the people listening in up to date. Um, basically, you know, we, I think we as a town, as a group, as the department and everything, we did well with the situation, you know, and, and, and my department, the permits kept going out. Uh, Jeff had us do the weekly reports, which, you know, told you, you know, what we were doing, you know, what, what permits were going out and everything. Uh, it worked out well the way we had them, you know, put the permits in the boxes and stuff, and all that worked out well. Um, some of the big things with the zoning, I think one of the biggest things was the outdoor dining. And as a group, and when I say as a group, the planning, uh, uh, fire, police, and everybody, you know, uh, they all got rallied together and, and, you know, issued the tent permits. That one went really well. Of course, that's why you see quite a few tents up in town, which is, is helping the restaurant owners. Um, uh, residential permits for the months Jan-, uh, January through May, uh, there was a total of 346, and the total value on, on those was 74,0689. So I'm saying compared to last year, we're not, you know, that's five months. We, we're, we're not doing bad really considering the virus and everything. Um, and any of these things that I said, you have them in your packets as far as, as weekly reports. And, you know, it, it, it will tell you where, where we inspected all that. As far as, uh, commercial permits and, uh, what I, what I'm going to do is just, the big stuff that is winding down, um, some of the things is like, we have that Russell Harretta building now. Uh, they're up and running and, 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 you know, it's good company and, and they have a warehouse in back. And we just, they just put a sprinkler system in there so they can put stock in there and everything. They have millions of dollars of worth of stock in there. Some of the other things is, uh, 198 Chatham Royal Island Tool. They, they, they have that second floor occupied now with the, uh, with insurance group. So that building's getting more and more occupied by the month stays. Uh, Lake Pine Resort, uh, I still, as far as I know, they're still planning to open this fall. Um, I think, you know, their big year will be next year, but I believe that'll bring a lot of people into town and a lot of business. And the restaurants probably will be up and running by then. And I, I think that'll all work out well, and it'll be good for them and be good for Sturbridge. The Rio Gas, uh, if you look over there, you'll see they've got that big frame, that steel frame going up. And that's going well, you know, they got the foundation all poured, the frame all up, and, uh, they'll close that in quickly now. Um, some of the interesting things that, other things that are happening. Stonewall Cafe, they're up and running, and not only they're up and running, I think they're going to take the downstairs over. Cause their little craft shop, uh, was a cash, because of the virus, I think, didn't help it any. But he wants to expand, so hopefully that building will be, you know, occupied. Five Place, they're, they're doing the bar in back right now. It's, they've got their bar off, though, and everything. Uh, it's going to really expand the area, so that's going to be another good restaurant, you know, as far as Sturbridge goes. Um, Sardar's Cafe, if you go by there, they were doing a fabulous business, you know, before the virus and then that hit. But he's investing in town. He, he just put, to the left, you'll see that big patio they're putting on there. So they're investing quite a bit of money. Table Three, they're, they're, they've already got a game plan as far as, uh, social distancing. They're actually going to take between, um, not the bomb, but that building right in front, that white building in the main building. They're actually, they just put a brand new kitchen in the building, and they're actually going to put a tunnel underneath the ground between the two buildings so that they can service both buildings with the new kitchen that they built. And this way it'll allow them more social distancing and stuff. So they're. So they're really gearing up too. I really would like to take this time to just thank all the business owners in town, because I really feel they're doing a good job. I mean, they're investing money, they're not really getting excited considering what they're going through, and I think Sturridge as a whole is faring really well with the situation we have. Like I say, every, okay, there's three big things that are coming up too, I believe. The pilot travel center, what they're doing is they're going to demo that restaurant, that big restaurant that's been there for years but hasn't been occupied. And what it is, it's roughly a 16,000 square foot restaurant. They're taking down, they're putting up a new 13 or almost $14,000 travel center. It's going to be more geared for the truckers and set up for the truckers and the deals and everything, which I see why they're doing it, it makes sense. The site plan, they showed us the site plan, they're changing it a lot, and what they're doing is they're trying to make the traffic so that all the trucks on Route 15, hopefully they won't be on the side of the road like they are now, and a lot of them will be in the parking lot. So they're really working with us to try to change that, and planning's working with them too as far as, you know, getting it better. The other thing is there's five fuel stations right now, they're going to go from five to nine, so that should help with the trucks too, because, you know, there'll be more capacity where they can pull in and pull out. One of the other three big things coming up is that New England cold storage on Pecor Road, take 84,000 square foot building. Of that, 74,000 is going to be freezing space, they're going to have like 14 large garage doors, the trucks will be coming in and going out, you know, with the frozen foods. The other thing that's interesting that looks like it's going to be coming up, we've had some meetings and planning has, and it's going to be coming up on our land use meeting this next month, this month, the end of this month, is that retirement community, they're proposing them 65 lots with the, they're manufacturing houses, I guess they call them. They're kind of like, you know, it's kind of like the ones on River Street, except it's going to be privately owned, and they're proposing like 65 lots, they're going to have a clubhouse. It's nice, and I think it'll be nice for people that want to stay in Sturridge or want to downsize, you know, for a lot of reasons, taxes and sizes and taking care of it and all that. And it looks like that's going to be coming, looks pretty positive. Other than that, I think that's, you know, what I wanted to say tonight.
Okay, thank you, Nelson. Any questions, comments, Nelson?
Nelson, I agree. I echo your sentiment about thinking the businesses, I think they've done a good job. And the restaurants.
Yeah, I think they've, yeah, they've done a great job.
Um, and I've been to a lot, well, a lot of them, and they're honoring the COVID guidelines, and I think Sturridge is doing a great job with all the tickation that's necessary. And I'm sure it's required a lot more work, and you're talking well, so.
Yeah, everybody and all of the departments have worked well together. You know, some of them are listening to what the governor's recommendations. We talk about it, we figure out, try to figure out what to say and not say, and Justin's been in on it too, and, you know, he's had those calls and everything. I think Dave's helped, I think everything's helped. I think it's went pretty well compared to a lot of places. I think it's really good.
I agree. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you, Nelson. Have a good night.
Yeah, you too. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Recreation Continents, Annie Rossioli.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, Annie.
So like Nelson said, it has been a while. I think it's actually been since the last summer, since Brett came in for our department updates. So I had provided kind of a quick overview of what we had for fall events, but most of our early spring into summer was canceled, obviously. It was a pretty unfortunate spring, but we did what we could in terms of working remotely and being home. The rec department introduced the weekly bell ringing, which we had some really nice comments shared, a lot of good feedback on that. Around Easter time, we switched over to letters to the Easter Bunny so they could write in. We provided coloring options. Anyone who wrote in received a personalized letter. Then we did weekly challenges, one activity per day ranging between cooking, fitness, yoga, meditation. That was fun. As most people know now, we unfortunately were not able to have the summer program. The guidelines for that are a little bit beyond what we can handle, as in mainly outdoor facilities. In replacement, we've done, registration was announced today. We now have our outdoor educational classes. These classes are for group sizes 10 and under, but we have an outdoor fitness class, arts crafts and music education, beginner's tennis, dance and yoga, and then we'll also have a variety of one-day classes, such as bracelet making and how to tie-dye. In terms of other typical rec department activities, youth leagues, luckily in the past couple weeks, their guidelines with the phases opening have allowed them to return to practice. Today, the guidelines came out, which will allow games to happen. Tournaments won't be happening just yet, but games is certainly helpful for our baseball and softball league. We don't have an answer on this time for concerts on the commons. With today's newest guidance being released, it's, group size for outdoor activities is going to be max at 100, and there's also some stipulations on the band members and how close apart they can be, especially if someone's singing. So we have quite a bit of new information to go through today and then review with the Health Department tomorrow. I'm trying to think of anything else for a general overview, if anyone has any questions.
I don't hear any questions. The board's hearing.
Um, just to repeat what you said about concerts on the common, I've had a lot of interviews. Is it 100 people maximum for an outdoor gathering now? Is there some contemplation of having them return later in July 4th or August?
So what we've been doing is canceling it on a week-by-week basis. We knew at the beginning, when it was obvious that we weren't going to be able to have any June concerts, so we canceled June collectively. What we've been doing now for the July 2nd, and I hope we don't have to do it for July 9th. We've been having each of the bands agree to a week's notice for cancellation, so we don't have to cancel anything in advance. So tomorrow, we'll go to Health a little bit more on when we think the next step of this phase will be. And hopefully, I have no idea if they have more insight as to when the steps may change or when group sizes may be allowed. We might be able to regulate that down there, but I truthfully have not been able to finish going through the guidelines, so I'm not sure what else to expect.
Okay, but that's helpful, because I know on the little sandwich board that the concerts were canceled through June, obviously because of the maximum on the outdoor gathering. But now you're only doing it on.
Because, I mean, as you would probably know, I think it would be possible to honor that
100 people gathering and just, you know, when it reached that maximum, then people are turned away from the concert. So I'm sure you're still looking into possibly bringing them back, correct? Because, I mean.
Yeah, we're hoping to have them as soon as it's safe. So we'll have to make a plan to monitor the 100 people, but there's also some pretty specific guidelines released on the band sizes, so tomorrow we'll have to do some measuring down on the bandstand, see what we can compensate.
All right, thank you. Okay, anyone else on the board? Hey, Annie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay, next we have the town public work.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. This is my report for April and May. I was due to come in June, I was kind of bummed until July, so this is the April and May reports. Nothing really out of the ordinary. The things that stand out is we did help out the farmer's market and put up a fence, which seems to be working okay down there. And we did some mods with Jeff, Ken and Robin, and we did some mods at the DDP, so that when you come in the side door, you can't walk into the building, you walk into a little, just a little area where if you turn left, you'll see April. We have a petition up there, Robin got us a glass and put a petition up, so she's protected, and you can't actually walk into the building. We have a half door there, so that stops that, that helps us out with the COVID. And as far as deliveries go now, it's not a problem now, because the doors are wide open, the delivery, people just come in and drop the boxes outside, which is good. And the only other major thing that's been going on is we're getting an awful lot of bad thunderstorms, and we've done an awful lot of tree removal and tree work, power outages and stuff like that, but other than that, everything's pretty much standard. Any questions?
Any questions on the board? Okay, Butch, finish it here right now. Do you want to do the milling and paving this in the stadium program?
Sure, we did out the milling and the paving, because those were the ones that were over 50,000. We did actually bid some other stuff too, but we get very little feedback, so I'm going to look for more prices, because I really wasn't liking the prices I got on some of the things. But for the milling and paving, we have Palmer Paving, again, the winner for the paving. Hang on a second, let me get the numbers. Palmer Paving came in at $65.75 a ton, which is about two bucks more than last year a ton. And the milling came in at $1.60, which is 20 cents cheaper than last year. So it pretty much came out about the same. And as far as the road construction, did you get a copy of the list of the roads? I can read them off where.
Uh, yeah, but we need to make a motion on this first, Butch.
Okay.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion on the bid for the milling, civic?
Uh.
Milling and paving.
This is Mike, and I'll make a motion to award the contract for reclamation to Garrity at $1.60 per square yard. And for paving, Palmer, to Palmer Paving for $6.65 per ton.
There's a second?
Yep, second, Chase.
Okay, Mary, how do you vote?
Yes, Mary.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes, Mike.
Chase, how do you vote?
Yes, Chase.
And I vote yes, Mary. Okay, Butch?
Okay, on the Stepway 2021 paving, we have Botwell Road, roughly from Blueberry Lane, almost the River Road, we're going to stop just shy of River Road, we've got this trail project coming out that's going to come out on River Road, they've got to put a new sidewalk in, and after that, they're going to pave that last little section. Olive Cheltenham Street and Chamberlain Ave, including the sidewalks, they ran it. McGilpin Road, the north end, between Fiskville Road and the old farm, the old white farm, I don't know if anybody knows that area that well, but short section, it's really, really bad. Then Sky Hill Road, roughly from the top of the hill down to the village entrance. And I want to do the southbound, you know, 148 from roughly the Pike Bridge up to around the Hanny's property, which is a section for some reason that wasn't done. It's kind of expensive, northbound, not that bad, so I'm just going to do the southbound now. And then I'm going to do Route 20.
Okay, Butch?
Yep.
So, Butch?
Yeah, Route 20, I have, I don't know if you probably noticed, a bunch of manholes that have sunk. We paved the over and the pride of these, the rock, it's quite horrible. So we're going to do all the ones that are bad there, and that's it.
Um, what's the schedule, Cheltenham, can you begin?
Uh, Cheltenham Street and Chamberlain Ave.
No.
Mill and pave, and then sidewalks, that.
All of Cheltenham, or just from 131 to Chamberlain?
All of Cheltenham, from 131 all the way down to the tapestry.
Okay, are you going to do that? You're going to do that little section at the cemetery?
I was going to do that when I did Naples. I'm doing Naples right here.
Okay, that's, that's you, okay. No problem, just ask that. Okay, any questions through the board? Is there a motion then to approve the paving program for this year?
Mary, so long.
Second, Mike.
Chase, second.
Okay, Jeff?
Yes, thank you. In the requested action, it would be to approve the paving program and authorize up to $400,000 for Chapter 90 funds for the projects. We have some funds left over from prior years, we can apply to pay for the rest, but we would want to have authorized up to $400,000 of Chapter 90 funds, please.
Okay, do you want to put that on, Mary?
Yes, as amended, to include what Jeff indicated.
$400,000, Chapter 90. Okay, Mike, did you second that?
Yes, I seconded that.
Okay, Chase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Anything else, Butch?
Well, if you want to do item J while we're here.
Okay, J, J. Oh, okay. That's the consideration and action of transferring truck 27 from the town of Public Works to Burgess Elementary School.
Yes, truck 27 is the only.
Hey, Dan, again.
Truck 27 is our oldest truck, it's one of the ones we were going to auction off. Not sure it would get much. They more or less need like a yard truck to run errands and to get gas. They come down to DDP now with their own personal vehicles, so the janitors asked me if I had anything going to auction, anything that they could possibly get, and they cleared it with their people, and they have their own mechanic at our garage, so they could do all the maintenance themselves, just a matter of asking them.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the transfer of the truck?
I'll make a motion to transfer truck 27 from the DDP to the Burgess Elementary School. Chase.
Second, Mike.
Anything discussing? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yeah.
Mike?
Yes, Mike.
Okay.
Yes, Chase.
I vote yes, Mary. Okay, Butch, have a good night.
Oh.
Thank you. I'm going to stick around for Chase's presentation.
Okay, no problem. Next we have Water and Thor, Chase?
Good evening, how you doing?
Good, you think?
I'm doing good and doing very well. You have the operating ports right in the bag, I'll look if any questions on those, answer those first.
Okay, the board has any questions on any of them?
Okay, moving forward, Well 3 motor went on Friday afternoon. We secured a loaner, the well's back up and running. We ordered a new motor today, the motor that was in there was almost 20 years old, so the water system's back up to its full capacity. We were able to reenact Well 4, because that had been shut off due to stream limits, but once I called DDP and explained the situation, they allowed us to turn that back on. So we really weren't ever in any jeopardy of not having enough water, plus our tanks, we kept them full all weekend. Other thing going on is you'll see us out in the streets. Um, other things going on is you'll see us out in the streets, 120, 131 in the next couple of weeks doing our, our gate valve exercising. Um, we also made some manhole repairs on some side roads that we picked up during the camel work we did last fall. And, um, we're gonna be fixing some more of those, going to, um, other things going on. Lead and cough, the lettuce went out last week. We'll be doing lead and cough sampling starting in July. Um, we have to have them collected by September. It's always, um, it's always a task to get people to, uh, take samples and pick them up, but we will be doing that. Um, besides that, you know, we're just dealing with the COVID stuff. Um, we have programs in place at both plants. We don't let people in, we don't let people out. Um, sample guys coming or uniform guys coming, they are designated area. Uh, the other thing is, you know, maybe do this, uh, change order requests that you're gonna see for the Fiskville Booster Station for $35,000, $35,600. Um, what happened was when Butch and I went and met with the engineers, originally we asked for ground frost pumps. Um, and the engineer explained that he had to put the spec out on the street and couldn't specify a certain pump. So at that time, we decided to let it out, let it go on the street and see where the ships fall. When the bid, when Riccardi Brothers did it, they bid it with Haze pumps. Um, and I gave a report to Jeff and what's on why I don't think we should use Haze pumps, it's pretty simple. Um, Haze pumps supplied a lot of the pumps to the wastewater plant when, when we built that in 2011, 2012. To date, as we keep beat right now, we have almost $100,000 in repairs or replacing pumps that came from Haze. We had a ground frost station that is a booster station at the bottom of Model Road. We took that over in 2013. To date, we spent $60 to repair it. So, um, in my opinion, and Butch agrees with me, we're better off spending extra money and getting ground frost pumps, and that's what the change order request is for.
Okay, any questions from the board or comments on that? Someone want to make a motion then to approve the change order?
So move, Chase.
Second, I'll second it, Mike.
We should really put the, um, sum in there, Fiskville Water Pump Station for a sum of $35,598.62.
Can I do as amended on that?
Yes. Okay, Mike?
Uh, yes. Mike.
Uh, do you approve the amendment?
Oh, yes, yes, I, I second that, uh, with the, uh, the amount in.
Okay, any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Okay.
Chase, yes.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
And I vote yes, Mary. Okay, Shane?
Uh, thank you for supporting that change order. I think it's, uh, the best thing for the town, to be honest. Um, and that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, Mike, okay, thank you, have a good night.
All right, you too, thank you.
Okay, next. Next on the agenda, we have consideration and possible action on revisions to the Service Police Department, use of force policy. Okay, anyone have any questions or comments on it?
Interim Chief Desert is on the call if you have questions about anything on there.
Good evening.
Chief, you want to?
I guess no questions. Somebody want to?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Yep?
No, go ahead.
Somebody want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion, Chase, to adopt the proposed changes to chapters 200 dash seven and 200 dash eight of the policies of the Service Police Department.
There a second?
I'll second it. Um, I just, after discussion, I just want.
Okay, that was Mary on the second. Uh, Mary Dowling, discussion?
Um, I just wanted to know, um, did we have council look over the changes, the additions to the policy on the, um, police?
I, I sent this off to, uh, Jeff and had, had it, um, sent to you for review. I've sent it out to the union. I've talked to the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission regarding it and, um, several other chiefs regarding the duty to intervene. It was basically in our policy, but it was hitting and not as clear as it should be. And I really felt post, uh, the George Floyd incident that we needed to put some real bold language in there that, um, spells out what intervene means and what an officer has to do when they see any type of misconduct. So, uh, right now, we're kind of ahead of, ahead of the game. Impact did say, um, there's probably gonna be changes coming out through the Accreditation Commission on this too. I'm just waiting for those, but right now, we are, um, ahead of the game.
Okay, my only, my only, um, input would be, I, I think it's great that you did, um, try to make that clearer on the duty to intervene. I personally though, because it's kind of a big change and, and in light of the environment, um, just to make sure that's the correct wording and it's worded the best way possible, I would probably pass it through council, um, to see if that language is doing what we want it to do. I, I think that we, it can't hurt and, and this is gonna be the policy moving forward. And before the union already gives its input and its approval, um, I think the language, is that language that you drafted, Earl, or did you get best practices?
Yeah, I, I got through, uh, other, other policies where I reviewed a bunch of other policies and used language that I thought best would fit our needs here in Sturbridge. I have no problem, uh, through, uh, town council, uh, that's not, that's not a problem.
I just think that's what they're there for, these kind of changes. Um, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, Mary, do you want to make an amendment to Chase's motion then?
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll make an amendment, um, that we approved it, um, pending review and approval by council on the change and added language.
Okay. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second, Chase.
Okay, Mike, how do you vote?
Yes. Mike.
Okay, how do you vote?
Yes, Chase.
Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
And I vote yes, Mary. We have, um, recommendation for appointment of Reed I to the Sturbridge Cultural Council. Jeff?
Uh, good evening. Reed I'd, uh, approached me about joining the cultural council. Um, I know Reed, uh, he's a neighbor, uh, and he's got, uh, some good interest in serving the community. He is on the call tonight if you have any questions, but I'd ask you to concur with my appointment of Mr. I to the cultural council. They are in desperate need of membership. Uh, they've had some people leave due to, uh, state imposed term limits on that particular committee. So, uh, they do need the new members and I think Reed would do an outstanding job on that committee.
Okay, Reed, is there anything you'd like to say?
Uh, nothing that I want to add or can add really at this point. Um, you know, I, I'm really committed to, uh, diversity in general. I'm, and I look forward to, um, you know, really being a, a part of the cultural fabric of the community.
Okay, thank you. Somebody willing to make a motion then?
Mike, I'll make a motion to concur with the appointment of Reed I to the Sturbridge Council, Cultural Council, uh, with a term of three years beginning July 1st, 2020. Well, it's already July 6th, so.
We're, we're beginning all terms of office July 1st.
So, beginning July 1st, so, uh, 2020.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second, Chase.
Okay, discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
I vote yes, and I just want to thank Jeff, um, for filling these two positions because we have had a void on them for a long time. Thank you, Reed, for your willingness to step up, um, to the cultural council.
Okay, Mike, how do you vote?
Oh, I, yes, for me.
Mike, turn the vote.
Somebody vote.
Yes. Mike, yes.
Chase?
Chase, yes.
Okay, and I vote yes, Mary.
Mary.
Thank you, thank you, Reed, and, um, you have to get sworn in by Superclerk, okay?
Yes, I will be there, uh, tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a recommendation for appointment of Dr. Alicia Redden to the Cultural Council. Jeff?
Yes, uh, Dr. Redden, uh, approached me about joining the cultural, asked if she applied online through our, uh, computer system. And I had a nice conversation with Dr. Redden. Uh, she's very interested in being on the cultural council. She was actually on the call earlier. I don't know, she must have had to, to leave the meeting, but I think, again, she'd be an outstanding representative for her. Her, uh, resume is in the packet this evening. Um, I don't, what's not on here is she served in the Navy for many years as a C B, as a construction worker in the Navy. So she's, brings tremendous broad experience, not only that's on her resume, but in her, her own personal life. So I think she'd be doing outstanding job and I can arrange to have her on another call if you so choose.
Well, her resume does speak for itself. Any questions or comments from the board?
I don't, I don't personally need her to come before us. Uh, or our phone in.
Somebody want to make a motion then?
I'll make, uh, Mary Dowling, I'll motion that, um, we appoint Dr. Alicia Redden to the Cultural Council, um, for a term of three years.
Second, Chase.
Okay, Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote yes.
Mary?
Mary, yeah.
Okay.
Chase, yes.
And I vote yes, Mary.
Thank you.
Next. We have a recommendation of reappointment of Rich Paradise as a full member to the Trails Committee.
Yes, uh, Rich Paradise, uh, currently serves on the Trails Committee and he's interested in a new term. Um, so I would ask you concur with your reappointment of Mr. Paradise.
Any questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
This is Mike. I'll make a motion to concur with the appointment of Rich Paradise to the Trails Committee as a full voting member for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2020.
There a second?
No. Second, Chase.
Okay, discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yeah.
Mike?
Yes, Mike.
Okay.
Chase, yes.
And I vote yes, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, we have consideration and possible action on the replacement of the rooftop air handling unit at Public Safety Complex. Jeff, want to explain that one, please?
Yes, um, as part of a town meeting some time ago, uh, $78,000 was appropriated for the replacement of the rooftop unit, air handling unit at the Public Safety Building. Uh, this is the one that, uh, supports the dispatch area and other significant portions of the Public Safety Building. Uh, Facilities Coordinator, Robin Kravitz, is on the line tonight. She handled the bidding of the project and is here with a recommendation for you all this evening. That recommendation is to approve the bid from New England Mechanical Services of $47,381. Robin, anything to add?
No, I've been working with the, uh, contract agreement series. The discrepancy in his bid form, but for to make this experiment law stated that is written out for the $47,000 as opposed to the math error on the second page for $48,000 is the, $47 is the correct number, and he is honoring that number. Um, everything else has gone into play. He, uh, delivered the performance bond, uh, payment bond to me today. I will have all the pieces of the contract pulled together, um, for signature, um, tomorrow, hopefully, and, um, asking that you approve the town administrator to be able to sign the contract when I have that 100% complete. And legal has reviewed that contract as well.
Okay, is there any questions, comments?
Yeah, I, I got a question. Was, uh, Mike, uh, was CNC Temp Control not responsive to, to the bid? Or, or determined to be not a responsible bidder?
Uh, their bid was incomplete. Uh, required as part of the, of required list of documents was the bid deposit and they did not include that in their bid. Um, the other two bidders did provide the 5% bid deposit or bid bond. Um, so, uh, that's why CNC package was incomplete.
Oh, they didn't, they didn't provide a bid bond?
Right, bid deposit.
No.
Oh, yes. Okay, so no, no bid bond, uh, or bid deposit. Uh, yeah, not, not a certified check, not a, nothing?
No.
They just didn't submit anything?
No, they had the form, the bid form was submitted, um, but they did not realize they needed to submit the bid deposit. And, um, unfortunately, it's not something that I can ask for after the fact.
Right, I understand that. That's, that's odd that they wouldn't do that, huh? There, I guess that's not, not being responsive then. Okay, um, that answers my question.
Okay, any other question? Someone want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion, Chase.
Go ahead, Chase.
Go ahead, Mike, go ahead. Uh, to accept the bid from New England Service for $47,381 for the replacement of the rooftop unit at the Public Safety Complex and approve the agreement.
And, um, have, uh, the town administrator sign it?
And have the town administrator sign it.
For a second?
Mike, I'll second that.
Mary.
Okay.
That's, uh, Mike can second.
Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
Okay.
Chase, yes.
And I vote yes, Mary. Okay, next we have consideration, possible action on the bay door replacement at the Public Safety Complex. If you want to explain that, please?
Yes, once again, there's money appropriated to replace all 10 bay doors at the Public Safety Building. Uh, Robin went through a bidding process and received only one bid. Um, but the bid is complete and responsive and we'd like to move forward with, uh, the bid from Door Systems, Inc. for $74,358.52 for the And we'd like to move forward with, uh, the bid from Door Systems, Inc. for $74,358.52 for the bay doors. Robin can be more specific in any information, if you have any questions.
Okay, Robin, anything to add?
Um, no, I just want, I guess I'll just quickly say this was a capital item that was on the to-do list. And, um, this bay doors, uh, they're failing one by one, so they were, they were well past their due date here. And Door Systems was actually, um, very, uh, cooperative even before the bid went out, um, for this project. So I have, I'm very confident in the contractor that they understand this project. Um, and I'm excited to work for them, and I'm excited to get down to the safety complex in general and, and take care of our first responders.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions from the board? Someone willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, this is Mike, I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Door Systems, Inc. for the replacement of the fire apparatus bay doors at the Public Safety Facility for $74,358.52 and approve the agreement to be signed by the town administrator.
Is there a second?
Chase?
Okay, Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
Chase?
Chase, yes.
And I vote yes, Mary. Okay, next we have, um, consideration and action on contract for heating oil for fiscal year '21.
Yes, thank you, I'd ask Robin to walk you through this one, please.
Sure. Um, good evening. So for the heating oil, um, we, this year, for, for all fuel procurement, were joined with CMRPC for their regional procurement, um, and they usually allow and ask for bids for heating oil, unleaded gas, diesel fuel, and propane. Um, we, so we participated in, on all four of those quotes with them this year. Unfortunately, the heating oil only returned one bidder, uh, who was our current bidder for, for fiscal '20, um, was our award for heating oil. Um, I was disappointed with their services this year, and we had some challenges with the actual mix of the fuel that they provided. So I'm hesitant to authorize to return with that company. Um, I received two additional quotes from Charlton Oil and American Discount Oil. They both, uh, gave decent rates. Um, and American Discount Oil provided a singular rate for the entire year. Um, and so I'm happy to recommend to the board that we authorize, um, the fiscal '20, '21 contract for American Discount Oil. Um, it's been a long process for this one, and sort of disappointed that the CMRPC only came out with one vendor, but, um, glad that I got a couple additional responses.
Okay, that's good. Any questions from the board? Someone want to make a motion?
Oh, oh, Mary?
Yep.
Um, there is one thing about the contract, um, I realized today that there's a list of, of locations in the contract, and it does not list the Route 20 pump station. So I would like to add that and make sure that we cover all the properties that we have to provide heating oil to.
Okay. Do you still need a motion?
Um, Chase, accept the bid from American Discount Oil for heating oil for $1.59 per gallon and approve the agreement, including the Route 20 pump station.
And have the town administrator?
And have the town administrator sign.
Mike, second.
Is there a second?
Second, Mike.
Question. Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
Okay.
Chase, yes.
And I vote yes, Mary. Okay, next we have consideration of contract for unleaded gas, diesel fuel, and propane for fiscal year '21. Robin?
Yes, so as I previously mentioned this evening, CMRPC received, uh, regional procurement, uh, for diesel fuel and unleaded gas. Um, for diesel fuels, Dennis K. Burke came in as a low bidder at $1.5320 per gallon and winter blend of 1.5820 per gallon. Um, their unleaded gas price was $1.4220 per gallon, and super is $1.572 per gallon. Um, being that Dennis Burke is a low bidder, and, uh, as I understand, they also had the fiscal '20, '20 contract, and they're very familiar with our DPW tanks, um, I recommend that we award the diesel and unleaded gas contract to Dennis Burke.
Any questions from the board? Is there a motion on that?
This is Mike, uh, I'll record.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Chase. Go ahead.
The computer. Chase, accept the recommended bid and approve the contracts with the town administrator to sign.
Okay, and that was with Dennis Burke for the, um, unleaded gas and diesel fuel.
And, and, yes.
Is there a second?
Mike, second.
Any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Mike?
Yes, Mike.
Chase?
Yes, Chase.
And I vote yes, Mary. Okay, then we have the propane bid?
Yes, um, AmeriGas from the Palmer Office bid 1.1, um, dollars per gallon for propane. This is for the propane at the library, um, the only site that we use propane at. Um, and that was through the CMRPC regional procurement bid as well.
Okay, is there a motion?
This is Mike, I'll, uh, make a motion to accept the recommended bid, uh, by AmeriGas for a dollar, uh, 10 cents per gallon uh, for propane, uh, and approve the contracts to be signed by the town administrator.
Is there a second?
Second, Chase.
Any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
Chase?
Chase, yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you, Robin.
Thank you, I'm still, I'll be around for a while longer.
Really?
She's, uh...
Is there a line?
She's got O and then A under new business. So if you want to take those two?
Um, oh, okay, oh. Consideration and possible action on an agreement, engineering services for design of the municipal parking lot 501 Main Street. Okay, Robin?
Yes, so, um, in preparation, um, for the special town meeting in January, where we, um, I do believe at that time we approved the purchase of 501 Main, um, and definitely approved the design, um, services for 501 Main Street for $15,000, we received free quotes from engineering firms to set that $15,000 threshold. Um, I'm recommending to the board to authorize CME Associate, which is now known as CHA, um, to design a concept and, and early planning along with site plan review and conservation review for the new parking lot at 501 Main Street.
Question? Is there a motion then?
I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the design and, and for engineering services for the municipal parking lot for 501 Main Street.
$12,000?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, um, I don't have that, for the, in the amount of $12,000. Hold on.
$12,200.
Sorry, I shouldn't have... Okay, for $12,200 from CHA Engineering.
Is there a second?
Second, Chase.
Question? Mike, how do you vote?
Uh, Mike, yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Chase?
Chase, yes.
And I vote yes, Mary.
I, I just have a comment.
Okay, next, Jeff?
Yes, at the last meeting, we discussed, uh, putting this parking lot project up for a grant that the state made available funds for these types of projects. We intend to submit it, uh, but the initial feedback we got from the people at the state that were managing those grants is they were more interested in sidewalks and connectivity grants than they were in parking lots and so forth. So we're going to proceed and see if we can submit this anyway, but, uh, they've got a different vision for what they want to do with that money, but we'll, we'll try anyway.
Okay, thank you. Chase, next we have consideration and possible action on the contract elevated services of fiscal '21. Robin?
Uh, yes, I was updated last meeting, uh, two meetings ago, I believe. And, um, we had discussed, um, elevator services for the four properties that we have elevators. Since that last meeting, I have received several additional quotes from Otis Elevator, um, Mr. Elevator was my original quote, and also from United Elevator. Um, of those three quotes, Otis Elevator, um, has come in the lowest, which is below our operating, um, anticipation for the fiscal '21. So I am recommending that we, um, authorize Otis Elevator for the fiscal '21, one-year term, um, contract for services on the four elevators. Um, pending legal review, I wanted to say that they provided a rider to the contract that I don't believe has made into your packet yet, because I have it in the review with JP Law. Um, and I'd like to make sure that they sign off on, on the rider, um, before we authorize the contract.
Okay, questions from the board? Someone willing to make a motion?
Chase, motion to approve the goods and services contract with Otis Elevator for FY '21 elevator servicing pending legal review.
Is there a second? Mary, second. Question? Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Chase?
Chase, yes.
And I vote yes.
Just one more comment before Robin jumps off, um, and Robin can answer specifics on this. Uh, the nursery school had a water leak, and the kitchen in the nursery school was flooded, and there's considerable, uh, damage to the floor in the kitchen. So we're going to have to file an insurance claim and do some pretty heavy-duty work in the kitchen at the nursery school to get that back and, uh, running again. Robin, is there any details on that you want to share?
Um, I have been in contact with Jeff, that we were planning on meeting out there on Wednesday. Um, I've been working in concert with Deb Moore and the director at the Co-op Nursery School. She is, uh, very willing and helpful, and, um, just glad this just happened over summer break.
Okay, so we'll get that fixed.
Okay, thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you, everybody, everyone.
You too, Robin, you too. Okay, next we have M. consideration and possible action on an agreement between the Sergeants of the Sturbridge Police Department, the Sturbridge Police Association, and the Sturbridge for the temporary increase in compensation during the term of interim chief, please. Jeff?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. Uh, with the temporary promotion of Lieutenant Desert to, uh, interim chief, some of the lieutenant's duties have been delegated down to the sergeants temporarily uh, for them to perform in the interim period, as the interim chief does another mix of chief duties and some of the lieutenant duties. Uh, as you know, there used to be two lieutenants, and with the one lieutenant being, uh, vacant, and now the other lieutenant, their job duties being, again, delegated down to the sergeants. The sergeants approached me about a temporary increase in pay for the additional, uh, responsibilities that they are going to assume, or have assumed during this interim period. I thought that was a fair, uh, a fair request, and we've, uh, come to a, an agreement in principle on this. The town attorney has reviewed it, the, uh, union has agreed to it, and I'd ask you to approve a temporary increase in pay. Uh, the budgetary impact, uh, is not there since we do have a vacancy in that department in chief, and that salary is currently going unpaid at this time. Uh, so I would ask you to support this temporary increase. And again, there's a, an agreement that, with the union that says this does not set precedent for future labor relations. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
Any questions from the board? Jeff, how did the 15% come up?
It was a, a back and forth. They proposed a number, we talked about a number, and it seemed reasonable.
All three?
Um, I personally, I personally would like to see, after the fact, what duties they had to do. I know you mentioned grant writing and stuff, what grants are being written. I would like to see how much time that they did have to put into the work before I personally will approve for any extra pay.
And, and I knew we were going to have this conversation, and over the past few weeks, we've tried to put together really what this means in terms of additional duties. Uh, you know, and saying, "Well, my supervisory duties are increasing," well, you're already a supervisor. But there's a, and maybe, is Earl still on? And maybe Earl can help a little bit here. Trying to actually quantify what the new responsibilities are for is really, we've, where we've had trouble uh, really putting into detail what these items are. So I understand where you are.
I, I am still...
Go ahead, Earl.
Yeah, I, I'm still here, and, um, it certainly was difficult when we lost one lieutenant, and we brought it down to just me doing the administrative and operational aspect to it. Then now we lose the police chief. And in order to keep the quality control that we have at the Sturbridge Police Department, there's got to be different layers of, uh, checks and balances. For example, one of our officers uses a use of force. Usually that goes from a sergeant to a lieutenant to the chief on an individual layer to review. So what I said is now, this is going to go between the sergeants and get, I want different points of view from everybody before it comes to me as the last layer to look at it. That's just one of many things that we're doing. But a lot of this quality control, pursuit reviews, uh, training, assigning training, scheduling... training, assigning training, scheduling, stuff that I've always done in the past, that if I don't do that, things may fall off the plate. So, I had to delegate that out so we don't lose any of our accreditation standards or anything like that. And we did compile a list of these duties.
Okay, I personally would like to see the list and the approximate time it would entail. Comments from the rest of the board?
Sorry, my dog.
Not your dog, you move it.
For me, if Mary wants to see them in order to get a majority vote or even, you know, all of us in favor of it, I'm fine waiting, but I think it's a very reasonable request because now the lieutenant position is open because Lieutenant Desert is assuming additional responsibilities as the acting chief, and the duties that he has had still have to be performed. And if we're asking people to perform duties and responsibilities beyond what they're being paid for, sergeant, and they're taking on duties of a lieutenant in the labor relations world, they should be compensated accordingly. So, I would agree with Jeff's recommendation that he negotiated an increase, and I would support it. So, I'm just, and, well, when we're done voting on this, I have something related that I would like to also bring up. I don't know if now is the right time, but I also feel, and maybe we've already done this, but I also feel that for the same reasons, our acting chief should have a pay adjustment as well, and maybe he has to reflect his additional duties as the acting chief for similar reasons. Everybody's working out of their job description right now while pending, you know, pending us hiring a permanent chief. So, that's where I'm coming from. I think it's appropriate that they be given a temporary pay increase to reflect their additional duties. And I would say, this is a different topic, but I would also say that Lieutenant Desert is also entitled to a similar consideration. Jeff?
Yes, when the, when you all approved his interim status, we did increase his pay.
Okay, I thought, I thought we might have it in front of me anymore. So, that would actually buttress the argument that the sergeant also should be given similar consideration, and they should get a temporary bump for their additional duties. If Mary wants to see what they are, that's great, but of course, there are going to be additional duties. Lieutenant Desert is no longer performing them, so.
We can, we can put a narrative together for the board.
My.
Mike?
Yeah, Mike, Madam Chair. My, my comment would be that I'm going through a similar situation where I have my business manager out, and actually, in the contract, there is stipulation for working out a grade for the personnel below that person, and there's two people that would be eligible for working out a grade, but the ruling was that only one person can work out a grade to cover the person that's out. So, I, you know, I just went through that where there were two people, not three in this instance. There's three people that want additional salary for working out a grade, and that's not commonly done. It's just, there's one person that can work out a grade to cover for the person that's out.
I don't know that our contract has that restriction.
Well, our contract didn't, but it's, it does have provisions for working out a grade, and it had to be decided, and it went to the attorneys and everything more. Only one person can get working out a grade. So, I, you know, my, my position would be just one person. If there's one person out, if there were two people out, then you could have two people working out a grade and so forth. That's my experience.
I, I have no problem waiting for a list of, you know, duties that they're performing, but I do agree with Selectman Dowling where if we're asking them to perform duties outside of their everyday role, that they do deserve a compensation for that.
Yeah, and I'm not disagreeing at that point. I have trouble with fifteen percent, and along with Mike, I mean, we have three people. Earl, how long have we been without the second lieutenant?
Since November of 2018 is when he left. And basically, when Lieutenant Solloyell left, Chief Ford at the time really, really felt like it was very important to have boots on the ground, out on the road, rather than have a second administrative slot. So, we never did fill that. We kept that position vacant is how it reads in our organizational chart right now, but essentially, we are, would be down two administrative positions. And being an accredited police department, there's a lot of administrative functions that have to take place, monthly reports, weekly reports, inspections, and so on. The list goes on.
No, I don't disagree with, I don't disagree with there being a lot of work, but I would like to, you know, see exactly what it entails, approximate times. I would imagine the paperwork now is less than it was when we've gone through the accreditation, and grants are slower now than they were.
So, the problem, one of the problems.
Not saying I would vote against it, but, oh, go ahead, Earl, sorry.
Yeah, no, I was, what I was starting to say is, so, we just got accredited in June. We got our blessing, so we're good for three years. But what has happened now is the Mass Police Accreditation Commission has come out with a new edition called the sixth edition. So, there's a lot of changes. And what I've said to the sergeants, I don't want to fall behind on this. We are going to start working together because the sixth edition means a lot of new changes, maybe new policies, new standards. So, we, we are working together. We formed a team like we did the last time, and we're starting to work on that to stay ahead of it and not fall behind it. So, it's a whole new game that we're not familiar with, and we're just trying to stay up with that and not having the classes. We're trying to do this stuff through emails and phone calls. So, that is one change that we are trying to stay current with and not fall behind on.
Mary?
I just have a couple of comments. I know what Mike said makes some sense. You have three increases for one position, but I don't think any one position, and Jeff could correct me if I'm wrong, at a fifteen percent salary increase is going to be equivalent to what Lieutenant Desert was making as a lieutenant. Am I correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Yeah, so, it, it would make a lot more sense if any one salary increase equals Lieutenant Desert's salary as a lieutenant. Then, of course, it would have to be a quid pro quo because one person was making basically what Lieutenant Desert is making, but they're not. So, the duties, if you will, from my understanding, are getting split up between the sergeants, and each one of them is getting only a percentage increase that would not even equal what Lieutenant Desert was making. So, I still don't think we're filling his shoes entirely. So, it, I don't have a problem that it's going, the pay increase is going to more than one employee because, again, it's not equal to what Lieutenant Desert was making. And then the other thing is, I guess, it wouldn't fly tonight because it looks like it would be a two-two vote, but I do hope when we're given the additional information or we have a full board, that we will make it retroactive to the date when they began assuming these duties and not effective the day that we actually take the vote. So, I would just put it out there. I'm not going to make the motion tonight because I don't think it would be.
Well, actually, Mary, the contract does have effective May 14th, so it would be retroactive.
So, there's no. Okay, that makes, so, waiting for the additional documentation is not going to financially harm them in the long run?
No, if, if it's going to be a majority or unanimous vote, I personally would wait till our next meeting. My vote.
That's fine.
All right, I, yeah, I'm not going to make the motion because it won't pass anyway.
Okay. Jeff?
Just one further comment. We'll, we'll put together the narrative to provide some additional data on that. But one of the, one of the benefits of distributing these job duties, if you were going to pick one, you'd have to basically open a recruitment within the police department. Who wants to be the interim lieutenant? Then you'd have to, and then if you promoted one of the sergeants to the interim lieutenant, then you have to pick somebody to be an interim sergeant. So, it creates this constant recruiting and selection in a time when really, you can't have a lot of interaction amongst people to do these kind of things. So, distributing the job duties against the sergeants allows them to retain their sergeant position and their duties in patrol, but gives them a little bit of responsibility outside their grade, gives them a little opportunity to show if they would be interested in a future lieutenant's position, who, who can do a better job. So, it fulfills a lot of functions beneficial to the department to distribute these duties across the three sergeants rather than just picking one and then having to backfill that job and then having to backfill another job. So, that's kind of the wisdom.
I don't disagree with people, but I was surprised we've been that long without a second lieutenant. Shame on me for not knowing. So, I think when we get a new police chief, we should really look at the staffing so we don't run into problems. Again, Jeff?
I agree, but the money for that position was spent on a patrolman. So, it's, although it's vacant, there's no funding behind it. I mean, I've, we would fill it if we could, but there's no dollars behind the job right now.
But it's something to look at, but.
Absolutely.
I think we're waiting till our next meeting, and we'll get the narrative, okay?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Okay, Earl, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, we have consideration and possible action on accepting the resignation of Andrea Menzen as administrative assistant to the Board of Slutkin and Town Administrator. Jeff?
Andrea's on the line tonight. Her letter is in the packet. It is, it's a devastating loss for our offices. She has fit in well and does an outstanding job, but certainly, her family has taken priority, which it always should, and we are in the process of saying goodbye to Andrea and looking for a new administrative assistant. She is working from home and has, and will continue to do so until a new person is selected, and that's where we are. Unless Andrea has anything to add.
Andrea?
Hi, I am here. Yes, I am. Of course, I'm here. Yeah, I know. Not too much to add. Thank you for that. Believe me, this was really a difficult decision for me, but like Jeff said, this is about my family, and yeah, it's bittersweet and really kind of pleasure to work with all of you. You know, I'm sad, but I, I think, you know, family helps work.
Well, thank you, Andrea, and I can be proud of that, especially your son. Nothing more important than your sister, you know, and I'm sure I can speak on behalf of the board how pleasant you have been to work with and efficient. There's nothing we've asked for that we haven't gotten. Okay?
Oh, thank you.
I just wanted to add too, I didn't know, you know, with pandemic-related and, and if working remotely would be a possible solution for a few months. I don't know if Jeff necessarily needs somebody in the office. He would be the best. It's his assistant, so he would know best, but I, I think it's a big loss because there's been a lot of turnover in this particular position, trying to find a good fit. He's really efficient. I've never seen our meeting minutes look as thorough and clear, and I didn't know if, you know, if it's related to being able to work remotely or not. If it was tied to that at all, then given the current situation, I would support her being able to do that. I, you know, and I don't, I don't know if that's something that was already considered by, by Jeff and Andrea. I just wanted to put that thought out there. But it, well, Jeff has been there as she said until we do get a, a new one because once we get back to full hours, we'll need someone in the office. But Andrea's willing to work, right?
If this was just a.
Yeah, certainly.
Well, I think Andrea should answer this question, but I've made it available to all the employees, all the nonessential employees, that if you are requiring, if you have the necessity to work from home during the COVID period because you don't have childcare or you don't feel comfortable in an employment setting, we have agreements with several employees that they can still telework, but at some point, will come back to the office when necessary. And I've made that option available to all the nonessential employees, and I have a few that have taken, partaken in that. And I don't think that is Andrea's case long-term, and she can answer that question.
Yeah, Jeff's really supportive of me working from home, you know, this full-time, you know, has not given me a date that I needed to come back, but given the circumstance and the fact that daycare is now open, you know, it's our choice to not take that risk. And I don't think that, like, waiting for, you know, I just, I can't admit I would ever feel comfortable, you know, sending him back to daycare. I really don't answer that. And I just think that, like Mary said, with a full-term hours, come back, you know, Jeff needs someone in the office, you know, his assistant's important, I think, and he deserves that, someone, you know, that he can rely on.
So, is there someone willing to make the reluctant motion?
This is Mike. Andrea, I'm very, very sad that you have to leave, but I do understand because if there's anything that I would have liked to do in my life was spend more time with my children, especially when they were the age of your son right now. So, I totally understand how hard a decision it is for you, so, but I do have to make a motion to accept your resignation regretfully. So moved.
Steven, thank you.
Agreed, David.
And I will second that. Andrea, you were awesome to work with, and, you know, I wish you all the best. You were really good.
Thank you so much, Jeff. Mary, how do you vote?
Um. I, I can't.
That would be, that would be kidnapping, Mary.
No, I have to vote, yeah, Mary.
Did you vote?
I said, yeah, Mary.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I.
Mike?
Yeah, it's really hard, but I had, yes.
Case?
Yes, good luck with everything, Andrea.
And I vote yes, Mary. Thank you. Okay, next, we have Old Business. Update on COVID-19, Jeff?
Thank you. As you know, the governor has moved us into phase three, which means As you know, the governor has moved us into phase three, which means more things open with restrictions from a town hall perspective and an office perspective that allows us to increase occupancy a little bit more. So we'll have more fluid arrangements in the building than we've had in the past. Other than that, you've seen the results in the community, the tents and the indoor dining. Now we're going to have gyms that can be opened with restrictions and so forth. On the town side, I have two requests this evening. The first is, we had, I had a hope that we would be ready to open town hall and COB back to regular hours this week. We are not. We need to make sure we have appropriate numbers of gatekeepers or doorkeepers for the tracking of the people that come in and out of town hall as required by the governor's guidance. We're in the process of training some new members of that group. Some of the senior workers want to do that particular job. So we have some new people we have to train. We also have to make sure that the public areas of the buildings can be sanitized daily. So we've got a couple of different hurdles to overcome before we can open to the public back to regular hours, and I would ask for your patience on that to give me through this week and maybe next week to make sure we can get all that worked out before we reopen to the public full-time. We're still going to be open the three days a week, four hours a day, and we've gotten some pretty good response on that. We've not heard a lot of people who are needing to get into town hall. When we're not open, we have the drop boxes, we have the online payments, you can make an appointment. So we've been pretty successful in accommodating through this period, but we just need a little bit more time to coordinate and make sure we're ready to have the buildings open back to regular hours. So that's my first comment. The second comment is a temporary, and I emailed this out this afternoon, maybe you've seen it or maybe you haven't, but the issue now is with the explosion of COVID cases outside of New England, New York, and New Jersey, and the intense guidance and recommendations we've gotten from the Commonwealth and the governor's office for people returning to Massachusetts to quarantine for 14 days. We have a concern at the staff level about employees who go out of state to one of these states that have a significant number of cases and then coming back to work without quarantining and possibly exposing the rest of the staff or their coworkers to the virus. So we've kind of put the word out to the employees, at least initially, and there's a policy that I'd like to have adopted by the board that basically says if you go to one of the states outside of New England or New York or New Jersey, that's your choice. But when you come back, you're going to quarantine, and those quarantine days are deducted from your pay, your vacation or personal leave, not your sick time. If you're an essential employee, you can get a negative test and come back to work, or if you're test positive, you can use your sick time for recovery. If you're a nonessential employee, if you go to one of these states, that's your choice, but when you come back, you're quarantined for 14 days. You can make arrangements to telework as we've done through the other COVID period, or you can test and come back to work. But that's the policy. Basically, if you go to one of these states, it's a hotspot. When you get back, you have to take 14 of your days off, not paid by the town or not just compensated to you, and get tested, or don't go to one of those hot zones for now. And that's kind of where I'd like to go. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. It's a tough gig, but having employees come back and possibly exposing the rest of a crew is unacceptable, and I just don't feel the taxpayers should be responsible for someone who goes out of state knowing full well that those states are on a quarantine list. So it's kind of where we are, and I would ask for input from the board.
Questions, comments, Mary?
I think a lot of that policy is very reasonable to me. I like the fact that they can come back and if they want to, or they can get their primary to give them a COVID test, that that would make sense. Of course, you can't, you know, I wouldn't require them to have it. They can have their choice between a quarantine. I know it's CDS, you still have to show symptoms at CDS, so you can go there without a primary endorsement. But I think a lot of primary physicians would sign off on that if they were down in Florida or some of these southern states that are now seeing a resurgence. My only hesitation would be, and I'm just putting this out there, this is my original thought, I might draw a distinction between employees that have gone to these other hotspots because they want to go on vacation there, and then they come back versus, you know, having a family-related matter that they have to go, you know, there's somebody sick in the family or there's a death in the family, and that's requiring them to go. I'm not sure under those circumstances. I think the contract would probably have bereavement, some type of leave anyway. But you know where I'm coming from, I kind of draw a distinction between a vacation and you going into Florida because, you know, one of your parents is sick, you need to go down and see them. So I don't know, I just wanted to put that out there for a possible dialogue.
Okay, Jeff, how do you feel about that?
I don't think that's unreasonable to allow a bereavement or an emergency visitation provision to the policy. I think that's fair.
And then I would, okay, and then I would also say, you know, it's kind of a fluid thing. Now some states are hotspots, and then they may not be in a month or two, and then there might be another state that is. So I would almost make it the states that they have to avoid almost involve, what are you saying, if they're outside of New England, right? They would have to, or is it for any outside of New England, or only hotspots outside of New England?
Currently, the list from the Commonwealth includes New England, New York, and New Jersey. Anything outside that, you have to quarantine. So we would want to tie this to whatever guidance we're getting from the Commonwealth.
Okay, that makes total sense, and I would support that with the caveat of an emergency situation. In that case, I would treat them more like an essential employee and want them to get tested and not have to use their vacation time.
Understood.
Okay, any other comments? Yes?
Now, this is something a lot of towns are talking about. Now, we don't, I did send this to the unions. One said fine, another pushed back a little bit. So until somehow this works its way through a labor process, we really don't know how something like this will be considered by the labor board. I don't mean the issue's going to be, do we make them use their vacation time, or does the town just pay them outright to take the 14 days? That's the issue that's going to be in question if this ever gets challenged. So hopefully, this will never get challenged because no one will partake in something like this where they go to a hotspot. And I think the emergency provision provides a little bit of flexibility there that may not have existed before. We just started to talk about this, but there may be a grievance if this gets applied, and we'll have to see how that goes.
Well, Jeff, when they're quarantining, are we giving them the option to work remotely during that time period?
For the nonessentials, yes, but the essential employees like a police officer or firefighter or DPW director, there's really no way to work remotely. But they have, but they're always going to have the opportunity to test out of it. And for first responders and essential employees, they usually get first crack at getting a test to come back to work in a potential exposure situation.
Okay, but the nonessentials, obviously, you can't, we're not going to charge them vacation time and require them to work remotely. I mean, my preference would be the nonessentials come back, they quarantine for two weeks, working remotely, which is what they were doing for the last several months.
Right, that's why you can make that flexibility with the nonessential employees, but the essential employees are really the ones that, you know, you can't telework. You can't telework, right? So you need them back on the street, so the goal is to get them, if they do leave and come back, get them tested, get them back in, get them back in service, right?
Yeah, this is Mike. I had this exact situation happen to me this morning. An employee came back from Fourth of July weekend, and he was telling the other employees that he had been parasailing in Myrtle Beach in South Carolina, which is the hotspot of all hotspots right now. And he, you know, thank goodness, he was wearing a mask and was social distanced from everybody else, and I sent him home for 14 days. But I called the director of nursing, and she said that it had to be four days before he could be tested before he can come back to work because of incubation period. So even essential employees might be losing a few days of incubation period before they can be tested. I don't know. We would have to check with our health department to see what their recommendation is, but that was, so, you know, as long as the essential employees can be tested and come back to work, seems like the policy is reasonable. Unfortunately, even essential employees might lose a few days because of the incubation period.
Okay.
I agree with Mary Dowling's statement. If there's a caveat in there about an emergency in a family, then, but otherwise, I agree.
Okay, Jeff, would you like a motion on that pending you getting up the complete written policy?
Yes, please.
Okay, is somebody willing to make that motion?
This is Mike. I'll make the motion that we, that the Board of Selectmen approve the proposed policy with the stipulation that if an employee is required to go out of the New England, New Jersey, New York area, that they, upon approval, they would get, may get to use some sick time if it was a required trip. I guess that's the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second that, Chase.
Question? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, uh?
Mike?
Yes, Mike.
Chase?
Chase, yes.
I vote, yes, Mary. Jeff?
And just to circle back to my first comment, the additional flexible time before we can reopen to the public, that's acceptable to the board?
I believe so. I mean, you know when it's.
Okay.
When it's ready there, more than we do.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments on this?
I agree with Mary. Jeff's discretion on that, when the town is ready to open with mitigation.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have, well, we're still on old business. Chase, any old?
I have no old.
Mary?
No.
I?
In early February, this was before COVID, we got a letter from the Office of Dam Safety about the dam that's by the Milliar. And just for some future, it just, I just, in the back of my head, I think there's a date around the first of August that a phase two report was supposed to be submitted. Now with COVID, I don't think ODS is going to hold us to that, but I'd just like to know at some future meeting what the status of that letter is and whether we're on track to do something about whatever the Office of Dam Safety is asking us to do.
Yes, we can get that to you. We did ask for an extension on all that due to COVID, but they reminded us this week that they're waiting on something. So we'll get, we'll corral that issue again and get it back on track.
Okay. That's all I have for old business.
And I have no, and I have no old business. New business? Chase?
No new, thank you.
Mary?
No.
Mike?
No new business.
And I have no new business, Mary. Okay, next we have correspondence. Mike?
June 16th, we received a letter from the Arbor Day Foundation, and they're congratulating Town of Sturbridge on earning recognition as a 2019 Tree City USA. The second correspondence we have is from friends at Charter Communications on upcoming changes. And they're, they're changing the lineup again. NBC, SN is now in Spectrum TV, lifestyle channels are being updated, and so the residents will be able to see on their television the changes coming. And if they want to see what the lineup is, they can go to www.spectrum.com/channels. And the third correspondence we have is from KP Law. It's a town council reappointment letter thanking us for reappointing KP Law as the town council for the Town of Sturbridge. And that's all the correspondence for the July 6th Selectmen's meeting.
Okay, anyone else have any? Okay, then we have minutes, we have the minutes to June 16th. Amy? On page 366, the first paragraph, fifth line down.
366, you said?
366.
Uh huh. I'm wrong, sorry.
That's okay. Paragraph. Yep, sixth line down, in the middle it says, Chief, High Chief, and Building Commissioner. We actually, like Trotters, have a commissioner, we have a building inspector.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have. Anyone else have anything? Their motion to approve is amended?
So moved, Mary.
Your second?
Second, Chase.
Mike, how do you vote?
abstained. I wasn't there.
That's right. Good eyes, good memory. Mary?
Mary, yes.
And I vote, yes. So that's 301. The Chase vote? Chase, the two.
It's a yes, yep.
Yeah, I thought, I thought I heard you. I can't wait to read. Same, yes.
Me too.
Okay, Andrea? The paragraph in the middle, Police Department, in the middle of the line, says many trainings has been canceled, should be had. Okay, did you see it? Okay, and then next. And then, next to that line at the end, it says, Mr. Deser to be interim chief. Okay, anyone else have anything? Need motion to approve is amended?
Don't move, Mary.
Second, Mike.
Second, Chase.
The discussion? Oh, I vote yes, Mary?
Mary, yes.
Four minutes. I just was reading something, so I lost it. You vote yes, Mary?
Three yes.
Chase, you voted yes, right?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, we all did, Mike, didn't I? I just messed up yours.
Mike, yes.
I'm watching Mary swatting mosquitoes away.
[inaudible].
A motion to approve is written?
So moved.
Motion to approve, Chase.
Second, Mike.
Chase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, yes.
Mary, you change. Abstain again. And I vote yes, Mary. So that's 301. Citizens for?
Let me see if someone's on the line. Hello, is there anyone on the phone this evening that would like to address the Board No one's on the line, let me see if there's an email. There's no, no public comment this evening, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there a motion then to adjourn?
I have...
Oh, Jeff?
Sorry, one more thing. I was originally scheduled to go to South Carolina to visit my son, who's graduating from a naval school on Monday, but since it's in South Carolina and I would have to quarantine for two weeks, we're not going. So the end next week is normal, but I am going to go ahead and take the Thursday and Friday of this week, which I was originally going to do, and stay local.
That's fine. Too bad you didn't graduate.
I know. Yeah, so...
I mean, you don't want to go and just work remotely when you get back.
I can't work remotely because without, someone has to be here to turn these meetings on, or you don't get the public comment. You don't get the public access to them.
I mean, I'm just going to put it out there, I want to put you on the spot, Jeff, for anything, but I would, you know, Jeff, to me, is an essential employee, so he could go, come back, and get tested. And we can't treat it like a vacation. I mean, usually when there's somebody on vacation, we appoint our interim town administrator. I mean, I would suggest if you had wanted to go doing it in a similar way.
I appreciate that, but this was, my wife is going to go with me, and she can't quarantine, so it's just, it's understood, and, you know, they've got restrictions on base on what he can do after graduation, what he can't do, so it's not really, it's not really a good time for either him or us, for us to be down there.
Terrible.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
They're going to do a Zoom meeting or something, a graduation?
No, they'll have it there, but the families can't be on the base to see the graduation anyway, so it'll be televised, YouTube, and we'll watch it, so...
Motion to adjourn? Don't move.
Gotcha.
That was Mary. Is there a second?
Second, Chase.
Okay. Any discussion? Mike, how do you vote?
Yes, Mike.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Chase?
Chase, yes.
And I vote yes, Mary. Okay, have a good night, people, and enjoy the nice weather.
Take care, everybody.
And I recognize, and I recognize the next one, yep.
Thank, no, it's fine. Thank you. Good night.